Okay, this is the Baltimore City Council's Cyber Security and Emergency Preparedness Committee. I am Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, co-chair of the committee. I'm joined to my left by Councilman Isaac Yitzchis Schleifer from the 5th District, our other co-chair of the committee, Council President Brandon Scott. To my immediate right is Sam Johnson, staff to the committee. In addition to the Council President's left is Andy Flax, volunteer staff to the committee. We're also joined by Michael Huber, Chief of Staff to Council President Scott, and Cheryl Goldstein, Deputy Chief of Staff to Mayor Jack Young. I'm going to turn it over to the Council President for brief introductory remarks, and then my co-chair.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, Mr. Co-Chair. In June, I established this committee and asked the co-chairs to conduct a comprehensive review of the vulnerabilities and response that allowed the ransomware attack to have such a devastating impact on our city. Under their great leadership, they have met with some of the best (coughs), excuse me, some of the best IT experts in the region to determine the scope of the issues we would investigate. These IT professionals have provided us with some valuable insight as to how we should proceed, and I thank them for their time and dedication. I would like to also thank the agency representatives and Deputy Chief of Staff for being here today. We are all here today to find out what happened and to ensure that we, as a city, have the tools necessary to ensure that an incident like this does not happen again. So, thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for attending this first hearing of the Committee on Cybersecurity and Emergency Preparedness. This hearing concerns cyber attacks, awareness, prevention, and mitigation. On May 7th, 2019, the city of Baltimore's computer network was hit by a ransomware attack. The attack held hostage necessary systems for employees to perform their day-to-day activities, and the citizens to access online city services. Millions of dollars were spent and countless man-hours were lost during the period of the attack. While systems, for the most part, are now back, there are productivity issues inherent and relating to getting back to normalcy. The City Council President announced the formation of this committee, which is charged to investigate the ransomware attack and provide comprehensive review of what happened and to secure the integrity of our city's computer systems. In addition, the committee will make recommendations to the City Council and the administration detailing best practices that need to be adopted to prevent further technology emergencies. To this end, the committee and staff brought in dozens of experts in the fields of cyber and emergency preparedness to have conversations about cybersecurity in general and this actual attack. The city officials gathered here today will educate us, educate the committee on the timeline of events from the discovery of the attack through where we are today and what has been done IT-wise and culture-wise to begin to lock down the system. We would be most interested in the events after action, reports and plans, and going forward in terms of training and exercising under the all-hazards approach to emergency planning. Tomorrow marks the six months of the day of the attack, and so we thank you and look forward to hearing from you guys today.
Thank you. Lastly, I would add, I'd like to take a moment to thank all of the experts who met with us, several of you who are here today, to help guide us in what the scope of this committee should be. We had a lot of very fruitful discussions that helped educate the committee on some of the things that you've dealt with in your professional experiences. And as I think the President and the co-chair mentioned, what I'm hoping that we can accomplish out of this committee is to get a better understanding of what happened and what we can do to prepare to ensure that, should this happen again, we are able to better deal with it and mitigate the impact of that. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Chief Goldstein. I know you guys provided a response. If you want to give an overview of that and introduce who's with you from the administration?
So, Council President Scott and co-chairs. So, in preparation for this hearing, at your request, we provided a number of different documents and materials to, as background, and our documents that we would refer to, of course, in the presentation. I, too, you know, want to echo your thanks for assembling some industry experts. I think we have, we've been offered a tremendous amount. There's been an outpouring of offers of help, and it's been hard for the city to accept those offers of help because of the nature of the incident and allowing outsiders in at the time of the cyber attack. So I think this is a really wonderful way to be able to, you know, get some of the assistance from our local community and local experts, and certainly the input from the local community and national experts is something that can help us all and be even better prepared for the future, so I thank you for that. As you know in the materials that we prepared and submitted to you in advance, we've provided a summary document that is sort of an overview of, of what we were going to talk about here today in terms of the incident, the response, and where we are today. I could read that out loud, but I will spare your time on that. You have that before you. We also provided you with some information about what our limitations are in sharing information with the committee. As you know, since this incident began, we have been unable to share any specific information about the forensics or the details of the attack itself. The U.S. Department of Justice has continued in its request for us not to reveal any of that information or have any of our employees reveal any of that information because there's an active and ongoing criminal investigation. And so unfortunately, we are still in a position where we can't share that with the council or the public. So tonight, based on the request from the council, Acting CIO Todd Carter is here, who can speak to the incident and the response from the perspective of BCIT. David McMillan is our Head of Emergency Management, and he is here as well to talk about the emergency response. Gail Guilford is our CISO and is here to assist with, with Todd in terms of the technology aspect. And then, you know, I think to the best of my ability, obviously I represent the administration, but there were a lot of things that happened during the cyber attack in terms of the communication aspects, as well as the manual workarounds that we all worked together to develop and prioritize to keep the systems running during the cyber attack. And I think probably, probably the, my team is probably the best folks to talk about those things. So I wanted to leave it to you all. I know you have a number of questions, and if you have any questions for me at this time, let me know.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, Mr. McMillan, do you have anything to present, or do you want to just get into questions?
I-
And please use the, the mic, because this is being streamed on Charm TV, so folks at home won't be able to hear you.
Sure. Just want to say thanks for inviting us here. We have a lot to share, and we look forward to answering any questions, and if we can't answer those questions appropriately, because of what Cheryl mentioned, we may have to get back to you at a certain point. So if you see us stutter, or if you see us kind of hesitate a little bit, we're kind of going through the mental gymnastics as to what we can and can't say as a result of the investigation. So I ask everyone to just recognize that at this point in time.
I'd echo those sentiments, and I look forward to answering the questions. Obviously, we submitted documents to be as responsive as possible to the requests from the committee, and in addition to that, I have a number of documents from our own reference. So when we get into talking about some of the particulars of the response to the incident, I think I can speak as candidly as I can to what occurred, and also, you know, educate as much as I can about, you know, how the city is compliant with the National Incident Management System and using ICS during emergencies. So I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. President. Councilman Schleifer.
Yeah, so thank you for offering to go through it. So what time on May 7th did the attack start?
I'm going to, I'm going to refer to the timeline that we, that we sent. We started getting, a lot of alerts occur within the wee hours on the, on the early morning of the 7th from roughly 2:300 to 3:30 in the morning. I can continue on if you'd like me to just go through that.
Yeah, so if you don't mind, if you can give us an overview, start us off from 3:30 in the morning, and the first 24 hours, what happened?
Yeah, so those, we started getting alerts. Our InfoSec team was notified. They began to do their initial investigation as to what some of those alerts meant. From there, they started to do, or they got to a point where they, they understood what the, the actual issue was. They identified that we had at least several workstations across different agencies that were impacted by the Robin Hood. They contacted their FBI, their MS ISAC, or the Maryland State Information Sharing, and what's the A for, Gail?
Analysis Center. It's a multi-state, I'm sorry. Don't get on me. Multi-state information sharing and analysis center, which is a program that was developed through Homeland Security as one of our partners.
Thanks, Gail.
Mr. Director, one second. Just, just a question. So, looking at the, at the timeline, it seems that the activity started on May 6th around in the evening time, right?
That's when we started to get some of the alerts.
The alerts, so, follow-up to that is, if the, that started happening on May the 6th, why didn't we really start to address it until May the 7th? Do we have people that are able to respond 24/7 to these kind of incidents? Do we have people on call that can deal with that? If we know, if we saw it happening the day before, essentially, May the 6th, why didn't the actual response not take place until the next day?
The actual response started in the early morning hours of May 7th. There was a gap between when the bunch of alerts that we got until we actually got our InfoSec team involved. That was a gap in, in service that we recognized, and we recognized we have to fix that.
So what, so explaining what the gap, what is the gap and why did the gap exist?
We've, we-
I know you weren't, you were brand, brand new, but yeah.
It's fine, it's fine. We failed to react to those initial volume of, of alerts, and Gail can, can, can go further into the details of that.
Yeah, I mean, listen-
But that is, that is one of the things that we know, and is part of our plan moving forward, that we have to fix in terms of just building a better, one, vulnerability management, and SOC and NAC analysis and monitoring.
Due to the staffing constraints that we were under at the time of the attack and before monies were allocated for more staff, not all of the alerts were identified. And at 6 o'clock in the morning, it was really about quarter 6, I got up, I had no email, and that's what put us for 4. But it was strictly due to the limited staffing due to funding.
Thank you. That, that's the question I was trying to get to. Was it a lack of response, not because we didn't want to do it, but you guys didn't have the resources allocated, allocated to do it? And I actually noticed that my email out at like 12:03 a.m., and actually asked someone, I figured that the server was just down. So thank you, thank you for that. Continue, sir.
Okay, so, once, so in addition to the FBI, the Maryland ISAC, Department of Homeland Security, the U.S. Secret Service, as well as the CIO of Greenville, which was contacted by our InfoSec team, leadership was also made aware of this ransomware attack via an email blast and BeMore Alert. And roughly around 1300 hours that day, we found that we had roughly estimated that 400 systems were, were impacted. So at, at that point in time, I'm going to give you ranges of times because it's a little, it's a little blurry, but we did our investigation from the, the InfoSec team and found that only the systems that were connected to the Baltimore City domain appeared to be impacted, meaning that the quasi-agencies were not impacted as a result of that. As a result of that outreach, we had those, those FBI, Secret Service, and DHS come on board. They got here that mid-afternoon. At that point in time, we asked for emergency authority to give CIO Frank Johnson the ability to contract with vendors under the emergency rules of the city so that we could bring in additional help. So at that, we, we started contacting Secular, FireEye, CrowdStrike, Cryptsys, Microsoft, and Checkpoint. I can tell you, I'm sitting in the room, this is my first day, and, and all of us didn't know who was really going to show up the next day. It had been a long day. We had done the initial triage. We reached out to these companies, and low and behold, without exception, with the exception of CrowdStrike, no disrespect to CrowdStrike, we, we had Secular, we had Cryptsys, we had Microsoft, we had FireEye show up around between 10 and 12 o'clock, and then we began our, our triage of what was happening and beginning to get into a cadence, a daily cadence, or, excuse me, an hourly cadence as to what our plan was to, to fight this and to, and to remediate from this particular ransomware attack. You have a question?
Yeah. The, the vendors that you brought in, whose decision was it to bring in those specific vendors?
We already had relationships with FireEye. They had done work prior to us. We also had a relationship with Secular as well. The Cryptsys piece, the CrowdStrike piece, we reached out to a number of those, and it really was who was giving us the most favorable vibes, if I may, as to who was going to really come in. Because at that time of night, CIO Frank Johnson actually had to get a letter of intent with Cryptsys, but we didn't get those same kind of warm and fuzzy with the other vendors. Microsoft is a partner of ours. That night, they were on the phone with our engineers, working through, trying to figure out and, and do additional triages, see what systems were impacted, et cetera. So that's how that decision came about.
So, just to follow up, but I think that the clarifying question is that, did Frank Johnson himself make the decisions? Who made the actual decisions to go with which vendor?
We were all in the room. I really can't say. It was the, the InfoSec team, myself. You're talking about, this was like 11:30 at night, when we were really, you know, talking to different vendors and telling them our situation and, and our needs, so-
11:30 on the 6th?
Yeah, between-
7th?
Yes.
On the 7th?
On the 7th, on the 7th. So it was late at night that we were talking to these representatives from these companies trying to get help.
So just a follow-up for you, Deputy Chief. This seems to me to be something that needs some kind of official regulation and decision-making authority, so that in the incident that we have something like this, there has to be some kind of protocols for these things, because not, this didn't necessarily happen in this case, but in a, in a rush and an emergency situation like this, a decision that could have been made that could have impacted other things with the city in a negative way. I think that we have to have protocols in place to make sure that decisions are being made that, one, benefit the whole city, but also don't violate anything else that we have, rules that we have going on.
Right. And I think, as I understand it, and you all know I wasn't actually here when any of that actually happened, but my understanding from all the information I have is that the team reached out to a number of qualified and well-regarded vendors in the field.
Thank you.
And then, you know, as, as the Acting CIO is saying, you know, from who was gonna, who was available and who was really going to actually show up, was worked with the city purchasing department and legal to enter emergency contracts. Now, I will say unquestionably, after this incident, you know, we have a lot more knowledge about all of that and the scope of the field, and we also have our own personal experience with the vendors that we worked with. And we have, I think, we, one, can set up contractual instruments in case something like this happens again, but I think we've also worked with the cyber insurance company to even outline some of the preferred vendors based on our knowledge and experience now so that we would be able to access them in the future if we needed them. But I absolutely agree with your point.
Thank you. And actually, you, you can take the mic.
And then I can sit?
Yeah, so you have to keep standing.
Great!
And just a, a follow-up to my, my earlier question about why the incidents were missed. Do you guys now have the staffing so that if someone's attacking at 12:45 a.m., that we will notice and we won't have to wait until the next morning to see that?
We have the controls in place, but we don't have all the staffing filled. We have a number of roles that we are actively recruiting for right now.
Okay, so you've been approved for the staffing?
Yes, we have been approved for the staffing.
All right, great.
We've done analysis as to what we need for both infrastructure as well as InfoSec, and we're actively recruiting.
Okay.
Can I, if I may, back to the question about the vendors that you brought on. Do we have a firm on retainer that can handle, I'm blanking on what the industry term is for this, but a firm that can handle disaster, disaster recovery efforts with a cyber attack? I'm blanking on the, I wish I knew these.
So are you referring to disaster recovery relative to cyber attack?
Yeah.
For forensic analysis? What type of services?
More so for determining exactly what happened and what's infected.
For forensic analysis, it's through the contr, excuse me, it's through the, the insurance that we have very specific rates and vendors that are designated for us to use in the event of another attack.
So we have, we have someone that's on call should, should there be another attack?
I believe we have a, a retainer with, with FireEye?
Yes, we do have a retainer with FireEye for incident response. And FireEye was already in a professional relationship with the city before the incident occurred. But we do have a retainer now so that we can negotiate the lowest rate for incident response availability through the year. And in our cyber insurance contract, ironically, FireEye is one of the vendors that were named. So we do have an incident response retainer. And Checkpoint and Microsoft, we were already in a contract relationship with them. The ones that we did not have an incident response type of relationship with would have been Cryptis, Secular, and, what was it, CrowdStrike you said? Yes. But we do have today an incident response contract for one year with FireEye.
So just to summarize, if there was an incident, if an incident occurred, if this incident replicated itself at this very moment, we could use that contract vehicle to have people physically on-site in a very short period of time?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we also have a contract relationship with the multi-state ISAC for their Albert system, which is, can be deployed on-site if you need to pull them in. However, they're 24/7 monitoring us anyway.
Thank you. So, so where you at in the first 24 hours? Who was running point at this point?
The CIO Frank Johnson was our overall incident commander. I was his deputy. On the 9th, we had Clark, Clark Hill come on board. They ran operations, so they ran the forensic-
Who is it?
Clark Hill was a firm that specializes in incident response. They ran the, the daily operations of remediation and forensics. So the, the expertise from Cryptis, Secular, FireEye, et cetera, was, was, was run daily from the Clark Hill resource. We had-
But can we, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can we just backtrack? Because you went all, you just went to three days later, so I just want to backtrack just to the first day. Because one, I guess one of the intentions of all of us here is to know from then to now, if the situation were to replicate, how things would be different. I think what we're seeing is that we now know that it wasn't until the 9th, so essentially, you know, two and a half days later, there started to be movement and communication, which is when-
I would disagree.
I'm sorry, what was it?
We, we, I would disagree that it wasn't until a couple days later that, one, the incident was running, or, two, that, that we started communicating.
Well, so that's what I'm trying to understand. So, so just to backtrack, so, all right, so Frank Johnson was in charge. Who was in the room in the first, in the, you know, within these first meetings to figure out what, what we're doing next? Because I'm looking at the timeline, and it, and it says what we know is that on, on the morning of the 9th, that's when city employees started to get information. I mean, we were sitting in our offices, not really sure to disconnect, not to connect people, we were getting conflicting stories from different people, and there wasn't a steady flow of information from at least what city employees should do. So, within that first, those first meetings, who was there and what, you know, what were you guys going off of, and, and how would that differ tomorrow versus May 7th?
So first, let me just talk about what we did. We did communicate on the 7th. We used, because remember, email was down. So we used the BeMore Alert system to communicate to everyone as best as we could. We also had to communicate via word of mouth. And David, you have anything to add to those communications?
Yeah, so, early on into the incident, we had communications, again, via BeMore Alert, which is our mass alert tool. So all city phone numbers, the voice of our IP phones.
Can I just ask one quick question on that?
Right.
Is there anybody in this room who works for the city and got any alerts from BeMore Alert system?
Oh.
I mean, the President, but I'm saying, so the council, did you get?
No, I'm, I'm signed up for BeMore Alert with both of my cellphones, and I didn't receive anything.
So I mean, one thing we want from all officials and all city employees ideally is that everybody would go ahead and register their cellphones, emails, and any other accounts to BeMore Alert to receive all the information that we put out there.
I'm, I'm registered, and I didn't receive anything.
All right, I'm registered also, and I didn't, because, I mean, we were, we were walking around the 5th floor trying to, you know, get some information on what we should be doing, like that first day we showed up to work, and so-
If I could show you the records of when we sent out the alert? So it's verified, and the system will give you numbers of who received the message, who responded, did it go to voicemail, all of those things. So if that's something the council is interested in looking at in the future, we could do that. The alert was sent out that way. In addition, we briefed Council President and the mayor at 2:00 p.m. on the 7th as to the nature of the incident, and then there was ongoing communications moving forward with top officials in the administration. I would keep in mind that it was an evolving situation. So I think our knowledge of what was happening and the level of impact, and our judgment as to what the impacts were in terms of city continuity of operations and our essential services to citizens, we were diagnosing that and communicating those, and then getting into our response rhythm.
So who, again, just to backtrack, who was in the room in, in these conversations?
So I would say as soon as, by the meeting, the briefings that I was attending, I was on scene at Incident Command by 10:30 on the 7th, and there's IT representatives from multiple agencies, including fire and police and health. There was also the IT teams from BISIT. Myself, OEM, we were on scene, and I think the incident grew from there. There was also federal officials.
Yeah, so, so, you know, the, you know, two things that, that I think David is kind of alluding to. One is the org chart that we set up to give structure to the event, but, but also the, the cadence that we had on day one, it included, you know, all of the agencies that had IT support leads, and they were with us throughout the first week-
Yes.
-on a daily basis as to what was going on, what we were doing, and they helped in that communication to their specific agencies. And we can give you the names of who those individuals are.
I have a quick question, David. So you, you mentioned that you all didn't really know what was going on at that point on May 7th, and my understanding is that, you know, or OEM activated watch level 3?
Yes.
Can you, can you quickly go through, and this is something we've talked about in the past, and I disagree with this decision, but you are the Emergency Management Director and professional here, but can you talk through what the criteria is for watch level 4, 3, 2, and 1?
So, watch level 4 is normal operations, so that's, you know, really nothing happening. It's, you know, blue skies. Watch level 3 is watch level, basically, essentially, we are doing remote coordination in the field or from offices with the appropriate agencies for whatever incident it is that we're remediating. So for instance, for the recent spat of bad weather that we had, we went to watch level 3, and we were coordinating with, you know, Baltimore City Wreckin' Parks. We were coordinating with all the appropriate agencies around trying to remediate the flooding, the wind, the downed trees, and most of that kind of coordination can be done either in the field at Incident Command via phone, email, text, and those kind of levels. When you get to watch level 2, which is a partial activation, we get to the physical EOC, and we say partial because we usually don't request all of the agencies, just the agencies that have active role in the operations and requesting any mutual aid around that incident. And then watch level 1 is a full activation, which means that we would have reps from every single full agency on scene in the EOC. In terms of the criteria for- In terms of the criteria for those things, really, when we get to watch level two, we're talking about public safety emergencies, where there's an immediate threat to life or property. And that decision, in terms of how to decide between level three, two, or one, is one that myself or the mayor makes. And that's according to the emergency operations plan. In terms of the criteria for that, there's a number of trainings that my staff and myself have attended about the role of EOCs and incident command during cyber responses. I have some copies of it, some excerpts from that guide I could give you all today. But essentially, the criteria for activating an EOC for a cyber event is no different than activating it for any other event, which again is threats to life or property or our ability as a city to remit critical resources and services to our citizens. So the first actions I took as soon as I gained knowledge of the event were to contact my contacts at fire, police, transportation, and then later the day, really sheriff's office to look at, are we answering calls for service? Are we able to serve warrants? Are we taking EMS calls? Is there any traffic impact? Is there an impact on our hospitals? Although they're, again, not government entities, but that's very important to the city's infrastructure. And after making all those calls to colleagues and contacts in those agencies, there was not. So while we were dealing with obviously a very serious incident, was an emergency whereby we should activate level two, my professional judgment that we should not. One more thing to acknowledge here is that using a remote activation in terms of web EOC is a best practice in emergency management. When you have a cyber event like this where we lost IT capabilities in the EOC without having IT access to police CAD, fire CAD, city watch cameras, all the tech and all the things we're used to, at that point, the EOC is just a room where people are gathering. So the question I'm asking myself after I've eliminated the public safety threat is, is it better to remotely coordinate this or is it better to be in the room? And the representatives that we had mining the information at the agency level, the ground level on kind of the day here, finding out how their agencies were impacted, I felt the best to remotely coordinate via twice daily conference calls and using the web EOC platform. And I briefed Mayor Young and Council President Scott at that 2:00 PM meeting to that approach.
Yeah, a follow-up. David, thank you, thank you for your responses. So that makes me think about the emergency operations plan. When's the last time we updated that? Have we updated it since 2013?
So we're in the process of trying to update that right now. We started sometime late last year, I can get you that exact, exact date. Obviously with, the city's been in a number of emergencies, we've been very busy as an office, really going back to the train derailment on Falls Road back in April. And obviously we had, you know, some weather, some winter weather and those things, we've been very busy. So with a staff of 12 people, we're making some more hires, we're going to be about 15 or 16 shortly. You know, there's sometimes limited capacity, we're stretched very thin during times of emergencies, particularly if it's multiple emergencies. So we continue on those efforts to update the EOPs. There's certainly sections of it that need updating because they're clearly out of date. For instance, HABC and DHCD have separated. So there's clear, obvious things that need updating. There's also things in terms of concepts of operations for who will do what that'll be updated, particularly, not that this hearing's about the ESF6 for sheltering. I've already had meetings with HABC, DHCD, Red Cross. We know that that's not the way we're currently operating. It's just getting the document to reflect the current operational reality.
Thank you. And do you know, you haven't been a director that whole time, do you know, on average, how often cities typically update their, their EOP?
Usually three to five years.
Three to five years.
And so we're at six years, so we're, we're a year overdue. And I think I've testified to the council before, written in oral, we're, you know, again, we are hoping to have it done by quarter one of this year. And there were some delays there and then also the number of incidents we've had. I'm thinking by probably quarter one of next year is when we're hoping to have something in front of the mayor to look at and, you know, basically promulgate.
Thank you. I think it's, and I appreciate you yourself reaching out to see and looking at how these kind of incidents are being considered from an emergency operations standpoint. To go to my next thing for you, and this is something that we actually talked about during the event, and the council members have been talking about, that the chairman, the communication. I think that none of us had been through this before.
Yes.
And I think that we, we saw that there was communication, even confusion, right, from folks even after they left out of the room. What, you know, of course, for people who were saying, we sent out the voicemail via VoIP, but when folks were told to unplug their phones, then they never were going to get their voicemail, right? And that, and the folks got their, their voicemail through email, they never were going to get their email. So since this incident has happened, have we sat with all of the agencies and said, in an incident like this, when email goes down for a period of time, when we can't communicate, this, these are the protocols and practices of how we're going to communicate intergovernmental, but also, and even more importantly, how we're going to communicate to the citizens of Baltimore, people that are looking for those services? And how we can make sure that information is still getting out there to people? Where to call, who to call, where they can get their information, where they can get their questions answered?
I'll start off with the, the communication to the internal stakeholders that we have. And we still have work to do, but we have been using a forum, we have two forums that we use. One forum is with all of the agency IT leads. On a regular basis, we meet with them on every two weeks. And when we have an incident that we have to respond to in the normal course of operations, we use a Slack channel to reach out to them, to tell them what's going on, and then to invite them into.
As a director, for the general public, you might have to say what Slack is. Everyone watching might not know what Slack is. Explain it as best as you can.
You know, Slack is, is similar to Messenger, text messaging. It's a channel that we reach out. So we've gotten used to reaching out to that group when we have incidents, and it has worked well. We know that's not the long-term solution. That long-term solution will be centered around Microsoft Teams as we roll into Office 365. We also have the group of individuals that do not have an IT representative and need to communicate. These are our customer-facing groups. So if we have a network outage, it's one thing, or if we have an incident, there's one thing to say, here are the technical people, here's what you need to do, here's what you need to communicate to your, your, your organizations while we work through this issue. And we give updates on a periodic basis. That other group that includes the, the groups that are customer-facing, we communicate to them through the same Slack channel. And we just set that up with them, so we haven't had the real live exercise, but we met with them and they know what the expectations are, and they know what we're asking of them in terms of, give us the resident impact, give us the intel that we need to help remediate that on a, on a, you know, as quickly as we can. And at that point in time, we would look to the, David's group for broader communications and/or the city stat innovation group for workarounds, et cetera. So we have, you know, by default, built something that we can use if, if this were to happen tomorrow for a sec.
So just a follow, oh, go ahead, David, if you can.
I would say that one of the ways that we communicate basic information about incidents, major incidents, minor incidents, emergencies, is typically by email through the watch level one, two, and three lists. And one of the first acts that I had as emergency manager was to add the council to its own list within that alert system, because previously, for whatever reason, you all were left off. So one thing I want to do is continue to have proactive communications with all of you. I think you all have all my personal contact information, professional hazard, I can't not answer the phone. So I always answer and try to be proactive in what I can talk about. But also, I think we saw in some ways the reliance on the watch lists, we're now building in more redundancy with BeMore Alert and other ways to try to message you all, leadership, elected officials, and the public during incidents. So I think any incident, the next incident is very unlikely that it impacts us the exact same way. You know, my worst nightmare would be that the 800 megahertz radios go out, and naturally the backbone of our communications for public safety. In this case, we had VoIP phones still working, we had 800 megahertz radios still working, police CAD and fighters, a lot of things that were very much still operational that therefore didn't affect our public safety communications. But that's because we were fortunate. So the next time, it might not be an email impact. Email might be up and we lose 800 megahertz radios. So we'll continue working on training and exercises for, you know, basically maintaining continuity of operations for any impact we might have. And it's going to likely be different the next time.
Just a question, thank you, thank you for that, David. And you're one person I never have, hope I have to call late night in city government.
Me or?
David.
You're going to call me, okay.
Never. But a follow-up, so is there, for example, for Slack, let's just say that Slack is down, right? Do we have a backup or workaround for, for the Slack communication?
Well, our, our goal is to eventually move that communication and those channels to Microsoft Teams and have Slack as the actual backup.
Okay.
So that, that's really our plan. If we were into an emergency where everything was down, then we would, you know, we would, you know, use an email or so if necessary.
So if we're going to use Microsoft Teams as our main system of communication, how are we able to do that if the domain is down?
Well, if, well, we're talking, I think, we, we believe that going to not Microsoft 365 or any cloud-based collaboration tools is going to give us a stronger security profile than we would have on-site. And that profile would keep us up to date on a more consistent basis, et cetera. So, so we're, we are, we are expecting to have that higher level of availability, the higher level of patching, the higher level of proactive monitoring of any event that would attack any Microsoft, for that matter, any other cloud system. So.
But, but you log into, you, you log into Teams using your Active Directory profile? And if the domain is down, isn't your Active Directory profile down?
So, correct, but in this, in the scenario that you paint, if that was down, we would go to a backup, because everyone's not on Microsoft 0365 yet. We would go to the Slack as a backup in your scenario.
So just, just for a non-technical, I, I feel like we're, I mean, to me, one of, not that I didn't know this, right, but like the lesson learned here is that everybody uses email, no one answers their telephone. You know, when we did the BeMore Alert, you had to answer your phone on your desk to get the BeMore Alert. And if it went to voicemail, you couldn't get your voicemail because the voicemail was impacted by the ransomware attack, right? And so, you know, to me, it seems like the global question is, you're a city employee, your email is down, how does anybody get in touch with you? And while I think that we have more work to do thinking about how we can creatively find solutions to that, I, I think that really, as, you know, old-fashioned and draconian as this may sound, like we actually have to go talk to people. Because, you know, would nobody in the, if you're a city employee, you know, there's a small number of city employees who have city-issued cellphones. We cannot require any city employee to give us their private cellphone number so that we can make contact with them. Obviously, there are employees within agencies that are essential employees that do have personal cellphones that they share with their leadership team or have work-generated cellphones. But in terms of thinking about a system where we could mass notify every single city employee if, if something like this happened again and there was no email, I, I really do think direct communication is the only, only quote-unquote really fail-safe workaround.
What's the legal barrier to not requiring city employees to give their personal cellphone number for, just for emergency use?
So I'm not going to put that to, we don't have somebody from legal or HR, but I feel like we, we've explored this issue with city HR when we were trying to require two-factor authentication when we were reissuing passwords, and that was an issue related to that. So it is, there is an issue related to that. Now, look, I mean, certainly at a voluntary level, any, but we could, we could have, you know, the city could have, or every agency could have a master cellphone list, right? And we could, we could have that. And, and maybe we should have that. That's what I'm saying, like, I think we're open to trying to think about those things. But I also just, you know, I mean, I'm a practical girl, so.
I mean, this is a great time to pitch to anybody at home listening and to the council. Anyone who's not signed up for BeMore Alert with all of your possible contact information, you're missing out on opportunity to get more information as we can put it out about these kinds of incidents. Now, in terms of this incident, there's challenges in communication because there's also the amount or the extent that we, to which we could actually communicate the operational reality. Even right now, we're still slightly hamstrung on what we can say and can't say about what happened from the IT perspective. On the general continuity of operations perspective, we tried to use the city website early on to get out information about what were the key operational numbers the citizens could call for the various services and all the departments. I think that's on the timeline. And, you know, I think in, in the future, we'll try to get that out even sooner, but it was up there within a week of the incident. And I think gathering that information, there's so many numbers in the city, not all of them will get citizens where they want to go. It's important that as we were putting out the numbers, we had someone who would actively answer the phone, particularly when we didn't have voicemail active, because that was impacted by the ransomware attack. And also that it was, you know, if you were going somewhere for a permit, you got the right number and you're not going to get the runaround. I mean, that's very important to us.
Nick, we get back to basics. Can we go, go a little, continue where we left off? So I'm still, we're still in the first 24 hours trying to figure out where this got started, how long it took to identify where it was, and then understanding what needed to come down, what needed to stay up, or, you know, what got taken down, how it got taken down? And all of that, you know, not necessarily getting into the specifics, but, you know, I read through the timeline. And what it's showing on the timeline here is that it was two days, it was a little over two days later when, you know, the text alerts went out to city employees, letting them, giving them some instruction. Now, certainly I agree, I agree with Ms. Goldstein that certainly that face-to-face interaction would have been very helpful. And, you know, there's only set, a few city buildings are all pretty much, you know, the key ones where you have a lot of people coming into, we could have had information at the front door. But for two days, city employees came to work not knowing what was going on, including council people. And so I just want to just get back to when, we, we know when it started, thank you. When, how long did it take to identify where this was located? Was there, the emergency plan that we know is outdated, was that a plan that was followed? Or was this the point of contact, the director at the time, was he just?
Let me help a little bit, okay? I know when it occurred and when we started to figure out what it was without saying what it was, we had an incident response for cyber within the InfoSec team. And it details the steps of what you should do, but more importantly, who you need to contact to assist in the identification of exactly what is going on, to assist in the remediation. We call it detect, remediate. That was online, but fortunately, three people had pieces of paper and they had telephone numbers programmed in both their work cellphones and their personal cellphones. So we followed the InfoSec group. That is how we got the correct people in to help identify exactly what it was and what we could do and what we could not do. That's a cyber incident response plan, which is different from David's plan. So that's how we knew what to start. When it came to the communication that you're specifically requesting, from what I remember, we defaulted to the senior management and OEM because we were so familiar with BeMore Alert.
So how long did it take to identify the source of the attack, to know what needed to come down and what, what could still remain up?
Yeah, we, I think you may have to rephrase that. We thought it goes.
How long, how long did it take for us as a city, the IT department, to know exactly what was going on and where it was happening?
Well, we, we recognized, and I think the timeline states it, that it was a ransomware attack. And when InfoSec reached out to Greenville in hopes of getting the encryption, potentially getting the encryption keys, we found out that this was a vir- a, a, a variant of ransomware that was not widely or hadn't been used up to that point where there were encryption keys available to encrypt our files. Whether we had those keys or not, we still would have had to go through all of the steps to remediate our systems, et cetera.
I get that. I'm saying, when did that take place? When did you know and you knew what the, where the issue was and the option, when did the option become available, whether or not to pay a ransom?
Yeah, what's the?
What, the option, I guess, if you want to put it broadly, was when you read the computer and it said, you can pay the bitcoins. But as the timeline states here, on May 7th. But, as the timeline states here, on May 7th, um, reached out to the merit, emergency authority, you see where it says, "The FBI is on-site," and then Secular and all them. We knew, you see, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., I'm sorry, when we reached out to FBI, multi-state ISAC, Homeland Security, and Secret Service, that's when we knew also to reach out to Greenville, because we immediately Googled what the name was, and Greenville was the first one to come up. And thanks to the efforts of our federal partners, they gave us the correct names of people to call in Greenville, and that's when, uh, what Todd was talking to, trying to utilize the key, and also identifying more about the ransomware itself.
Excuse me?
And as a result of that, is when we were able to determine that it was a variant, and there would not be a key.
I, I think, though, you're asking, when did we make the final decision for whether or not we should pay the ransom or not? Is that what you're asking?
I'm, I'm not up to that yet, I just want to know...
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just...
I just want to know when, at what point, timeline, what day, around what time, did we know exactly where this attack occurred? I don't want to know publicly where it was or anything, I just want to, at what point, how long did it take us to find out, to pinpoint exactly where in the city, um, city system the attack was taking place?
We, we cannot answer, that's part of the federal investigation, we can't answer that question.
The only piece we can answer is right in the timeline, between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock, we knew what, on the, the morning of May 7th, we knew it, what ransomware it was, but not how to get rid of it. Does that answer your question?
No, but I see that...
I mean, I think...
I was gonna say, I, I think, and I, if I'm understanding your question right, the FBI seized a number of computers, right, and was part of an investigation. So, I think that you are asking, when did we know exactly where the intrusion occurred, and when we figured that out? And that is definitely something that we've specifically been asked not to talk about, because they think it could impact the investigation. So, that, that's what you're hearing. I, I think if you want to know, you know, sort of when we knew it was ransomware, and, you know, when we took specific actions to address the situation, that, I think that's all fine, you know what I mean? But there, the, the, the where exactly it occurred and when exactly we decided that it occurred there are things that, um, the, the federal investigators don't want us talking about.
So, I'll, I'll stay away from that. In, in looking at where we were then versus where we are today, what would we, what would you say are the key things, because we, we all understand what the problems were, and, and the communication was obviously the big thing, and that's the easiest thing, I believe, to fix, because again, this can happen at any time to anyone. And so, the communication is that, is that piece. What are the, the key things that if an incident were to occur again, that we'd be doing differently instantly, then, you know, that we've learned from the process? And if something were to occur again, what can we expect would be done differently?
Um, I can answer that. I, I think, um, one, we recognize, again, I'll just have to say that we can communicate differently. Uh, we've put in a lot of, um, and, um, this may sound somewhat cryptic when I say it, because I'm trying not to, um, be so specific as to, to what tools or processes that we've, we've implemented. But we put in a number of tools that would minimize how, if, if we were attacked again, someone could move around in, in our environment and cause such widespread, um, damage to files, computers, and processes. Um, we've, we've added a, a number of, of tools and processes to protect, um, our servers, our firewalls, uh, our network. Uh, we've added, uh, different types of, of monitoring that gives us a better insight as to, you know, what's happening and when. We still have work to do, uh, but, but in answer to your question, uh, what would be different, one, we would, you know, know sooner, and two, the, the, what we've put in place would, would minimize the, the spread of what could happen.
I guess, on the communication front?
I was gonna say, I mean, I think we have a lot of lessons learned from communication. I think, um, I know, um, that Todd already spoke to sort of the, the Slack channels and some official ways of doing communication, and the Be More Alert, and I, I actually think, you know, we need to do more testing, like, send out test messages of Be More Alert and being more active about that. But I also think, you know, we have a lot of lessons learned about communication, and in terms of thinking about how to better communicate to the public, how better to communicate to the council, how better to get communication out to different city employees, and I think, and, and I hope that you would agree, I think that, um, you know, while it was a week or 10 days in, that, that that did get figured out, it did get improved, and we learned a lot from that process. And I think we would, we've learned from that and would act on that and institutionalize that, and that would start on day one instead of on day eight or day nine, when it, I think more of that kicked in. I, I would also add that, you know, we went through a really robust process about continuity of operations and manual workarounds for agencies. Um, you know, I think in the early days, and I, again, I wasn't here, so I'm presuming this, I think people sort of waited for the system to come back up, right? People thought it would be okay the next day, because they didn't know and they didn't have information. And I think we, we, we figured out ways to keep everything running in government and implemented them, but we would do that much quicker this time. Um, and so, I think those are all really important lessons that we learned from this. It's terrible to have gone through this and had to have learned them the hard way, but I, I think those are all things that you would see much improved if something like this unfortunately happened again.
And so, thank you for that, Madam Deputy. Just a, a couple of follow-ups to this, to the point, the questioning of the, the chairman. So, uh, for example, David, for Be More Alert, so it seems that there was an issue with people not getting it? Is this something that we contract out? Have we tested it to see if it's going through to everyone? Like, is this a vendor that we use? Because I think that that's something, a issue that we need to get resolved, if a lot of people who were, were signed up didn't get it.
So, for Be More Alert, it's powered by Code Red by a company, Onsolve. They're one of basically the two best practices in mass alerts. It's that company and Everbridge, and they're kind of jockeying for position with upgrades for who's better. Both companies do a fantastic job. Really, Be More Alert is going to be as good as the information that's in it, and that people have to be in some level present for the alert. Uh, some of that saving the, the, the line, the phone line that comes in, is something that you recognize. We all know there's all this new cloning and spam messages, so people have lots of reasons to not answer a phone number they might not recognize. So, we're, we're going to continue to work to do outreach on that. If people go to BaltimoreCity.gov backslash emergency, and you go sign up for the alerts, it'll have more information there, you can get, uh, more used to that. So, that's, that's one component. We'll continue to do tests and drills and test communications. We're constantly communicating via that tool, our, our Twitter account, Baltimore OEM, via our Facebook page, the city website, about all various sorts of incidents that the city is, is undergoing. So, if anyone knows of any issues with it, I, you know, I'd, I'd like to know those, and we can continue to work on that.
Yeah, I think that we have a perfect example of these two gentlemen, and I know, because Councilman Costello gives his cellphone number out to everyone, that he doesn't ignore any numbers, so he would definitely not have ignored it to, so if we can get to the bottom of that issue, I think that would be greatly appreciated by all. And then, to go back to that point of the communication within agencies, uh, like the deputy chief, I'm an old-school guy, even though I, I love technology. Have we got, have you guys thought about in going a little further, right? And in these agencies, we have bureaus, have we gone to the point, just like we do with emergency exits, right, of going to every bureau in the department and trying to work with that person that in this event, they are the person that's getting the communication from the people in the room with the IT director, so that we're, uh, reaching everybody that we can reach? Because we all know, we love, we love our agency directors, but we know a lot of that information that flows even when we email it out, right? It's not until the bureau heads and those mid-level supervisors get that information out to the workers that they actually get it. Have we thought about figuring out a way to add those individuals in some kind of way of communication so that they can push the information out as well?
When you say those individuals, meaning...
Meaning, for example, if you give it to, he's not here, but you give it to Director Chow, that doesn't necessarily mean that the gentleman who's out fixing water main breaks that day is going to get that information. However, if that information got directly to USEF or Mr. Galloway, I'm pretty sure that those individuals would get that information, right? Building in that system so that it's not just, I'm not trying to add a whole bunch of people, but talking about specific key people in bureaus within agencies that we know, uh, communicate with the frontline employees on a more regular basis.
So, we've actually, when I talked about, uh, palating it, we, again, we still have work to do, but we've had, uh, issues since the, our systems have been up, and we have done just that. When we had a, uh, some, several server issues that were sporadic across the Baltimore City, we had to use exactly what you said, so that we could get directly to those Baltimore City locations that were still having problems, because it wasn't everywhere. So, the people that we communicate with are those agency IT leads that are not to the director level. We communicate to them as well, but these are kind of the, the mid-level, uh, leaders, and we talk to them about what our expectations are and what our needs are, and it benefits both of us. It's, it's, it's them and their role, but it's also us and our role to make sure that we get the communications out and people act on it, so that we can resolve whatever the problems we have.
Are these people, you said IT leads, I'm talking about other than IT leads?
I'm talking to, these are agency IT leads that are, um, for instance, and again, the example that I just referenced, uh, the DPW had maybe 13 sites that we needed to correct. We, through our contacts, were able to talk directly to those sites, make the corrections we needed, validate those, that those corrections occurred, and then just go on to the next set. And we have those, uh, contacts in each of those agencies. And that's the group I said we meet with on a bi-weekly basis.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I think that what I'm talking about is a little bit more extensive than that, and that's great.
I agree, I, we have more work to do.
Yeah, okay.
And I recognize the point of...
Just want to make sure that we build that, hopefully we never have to use it all, but we need to be prepared.
So, I guess an example would be for Code Red alerts issued by the Health Department. They have a protocol, basically a call tree, where when it gets alerted, it, basically the director alerts a number of her deputy directors, they're alert a number of top agency reps, including myself and my team, and then we alert who we alert.
There we go.
And that's very kind of retro in the approach, but very effective for this kind of emergency. So, I think we can work with IT, with agencies, on that kind of communications. Uh, we do a lot of that during emergencies through EOC reps and doing COOP activations. I think the exact profile of how this attack affected our core capabilities and communication was new, was relatively new, I think, nationwide. And I think lots of other major American cities are reaching out to me and to us at various points for all the information they can get about our experience, and how they cannot, but follow the same thing, and how they can improve before they get it. So, we definitely know there's ways we can improve. I think, again, the biggest challenge is, the city's emergency operations plan in line with national standards, it's an all-hazards approach, and you don't want to over-focus on one kind of hazard, where I, I'm not an IT professional, so I shouldn't say this, but I would guess it's not likely that we get hit with the exact same variant of Robinhood again. It'll be a new, uh, variant of some other thing.
You almost made a director jump out of his seat, and Mrs. Gale.
Yes, but, but my point to that is just, the next incident might not affect email, it might knock out all VoIP phones, or all 800 megahertz radios, or all CAD.
You're just not giving examples of bad things that could happen.
That's what I, that's what I do all the time, it's my brain, though.
Yeah, I told you, he's like the worst person to talk to.
So, my point is just that we'll work on those kind of workarounds and having those relationships. I think from my end, not having the watch level list immediately available changed a lot of the basic protocols for how we alert the emergency professionals or the basically top stakeholders in the city about emergencies. Uh, we used Be More Alert as well as we could, given the information in it, to conduct those. I also texted, basically it was the cabinet meeting the next day, I gathered any contact I did not have, I gathered then, and put out the information about the daily calls, and the daily calls were how we disseminate information about COOP and keeping the lights on. And we, and it was important to me at that point, working with Director Johnson and then Deputy Director Carter, that we kept the COOP component of this as separate as possible from the incident command around the cyber, to not overwhelm his staff with questions about, "Where do I get a clean computer? How do I get a MiFi? How are we going to get paid?" All of that was being worked on by my group, and then City Stat Smart and Cheryl's team came in and enhanced that further. So, we wanted to keep that component of the continuity of operations separate from, how do we get all the other parts IT-wise that I'm not qualified to talk about remediated? And I think our next time dealing with this, knock on wood, I hope there's not a next time, but that's what we had to plan for, will be even more efficient in terms of the timeline that we can push.
Thank you. And David, just to go back to something you said earlier about your worst fear about the radios going out?
Yes.
Do we, do we have a backup plan for that?
Oh, there's all sorts of emergency protocols for fire and police about how they would do dispatch and those things without CAD.
Thanks.
So, so, all those things exist at the agency level. Uh, but on top of that, you know, there's obviously cellphones where, have FirstNet is being built out by AT&amp;T, and that's a possibility for us to get, basically again, phones that'll be more like radios built in to our network. So, there's a lot that we can do.
Yeah, I, I think we probably should stay away from, uh, from those specific conversations, especially as it pertains to the radios, um, because there's certainly a lot that, that needs to be discussed but shouldn't be spoken about, so, go ahead.
So, so backup for email, so one of the things that we were advised to do is create a Gmail account, um, which was in violation of Gmail's terms of service, but we created them anyway because that's what we were told to do. And then Gmail deactivated those email accounts. Was there an opportunity to bring Google in at the very beginning and say, replicate our Active Directory and get us email accounts for everyone?
I might actually, oddly enough, be the best person to answer that question, so, and it was not, I, I'd, I'd have to, I could tell you what the date was, but it was after the counts were deactivated. Um, Google had done out, had reached out to the city, um, and they came and they met with us and offered assistance, but at a very significant cost. So, yes, there was an opportunity, and, and frankly, it, you know, for a service like that, where we were thinking, it was more about thinking about going to an internet, I'm sorry, a web-based email client, you know, we had to, that was a much broader conversation and something also we had to think about if we were going to change services, whether we would put that out for bid. So, there was a discussion, but it was not immediate, to your point, um, and it was not inexpensive.
And you were fantastic during this, Cheryl, because you assisted me with, when my account was out while I was on the other side of the country, so I appreciate that. I would encourage the administration and BSIT to think about, um, what, what type of backups we could have in place for email should email go down again, because we conduct so much of our business over email.
We do.
Electronically. What about, uh, for, for VoIP, um, you know, the phones on the, on the fifth floor were actually out, so it wasn't just the voicemail that didn't work, like, the phones didn't work on May 7th? I don't know why, but they didn't. Do, do we have, do we have a backup for, do we have a backup plan for voicemail? Because we had folks who would just call and the phone would ring, and, but the phone wasn't ringing on our end.
So, you know, the phone system is not, the, the phone system, as I understand it, is under the control of the municipal telephone exchange, which is within the ambit of the comptroller's office. And so, you know, um, you know, while we do our, we work with them...
Yes, yes.
That, that service is not under our control, and we got a lot of inquiries, I know I did, I, I expect that BCI T did, um, but we really had to refer those inquiries to the municipal telephone exchange. I will say that, um, semi-related to this is, um, we, the city is exploring, um, call center technology and, you know, looking at different telephone systems and backups and redundancies related to the call centers that we, the many call centers that we have. Um, so I think we can take the lessons that we learned from that and certainly share that with MTE and, and think about that going forward.
Is there a, do you all have an opinion on whether or not there's an opportunity to reduce overlap by having the MTE functionality underneath the administration, specifically within BSIT?
I think that's something we'd have to think about and talked about. I don't, I don't feel like I can answer that question today. Um, I think I'm happy for, to get the right people together to think about that and to give feedback to you all about that, but I don't feel well-equipped to answer that today.
Okay, well, we're going to have MTE at the next hearing of this committee, so that we can address, uh, some of...
One, one thing I'd add, MTE was at the table very early on in the incident, and they were a good partner in terms of, we ordered, we had a number of MiFi's on hand for basically cellular internet access, and we got those out as soon as possible with the help of BSIT, and we also ordered a, a great deal more, I want to say 500 or so, uh, and got those... those out. So, you know, one of our early pushes early on was to get clean laptops and wireless internet access, and being that MiFi's and any cellular technology counts as phones as under MT's purview, we need them at the table, but I think they did a great job in terms of being partners. I think we can continue to partner more with them as long as they have control of telephony, cellular networks, and all of those things that go with that now that the line between phones and computers is a little bit more blurred.
Okay.
So, just two, two different questions. So, I guess I'll start with, with the disaster plan. When, when can we expect it to be updated and current, with current technology and the current threats and the current situations? When should we expect to see that finalized?
The emergency operations plan, my goal would be to have it updated by the end of quarter one. The big thing there is to get the stakeholders at the table who would actually be doing the work to validate, basically, in terms of the core support functions and the lead agencies, what's actually going to happen. So, that's my goal, and I'll be working with Deputy Chiefs of Staff on making that happen. So, that's my goal for that. As a reminder, the EOP is a broad framework for how the city agencies interact with each other. It doesn't get into the weeds on the exact emergency protocols for how IT would deal with an IT incident or how, you know, police would deal with civil unrest. Those agency-level tactics are left to the policies and procedures for each agency underneath the commander, the incident commander, who's going to be the high-striking official on scene for that agency. So, my point is, it will be up to date ideally by quarter one. That's my goal, and, but getting the lower plans in each agency about how they respond to incidents, their responsibility, that would be up to that agency.
Again, as far as BSIT's concerned, obviously, cybersecurity as a whole, you know, it's a whole different, you know, situation than the kinds of things that you guys have prepared for, for decades. And so, do you intend to completely overhaul the five-year plan that was submitted by the previous director? And to start off with an underlying focus on first securing our networks? Because in the previous plan, as I brought up in previous hearings, there was little to no mention of cybersecurity anywhere in the city's five-year plan that the council was asked to throw pretty significant funds behind, which looked really attractive, it had a lot of colors and a lot of pictures, and it was really nice, but it lacked the most fundamental needs of city government. So, do you plan to give that a complete overhaul? What do you, what do you plan to do with that?
The short answer is, we, we have a plan right now, and that's the plan that we're executing on. I briefed Council President on that plan last week, and there are ten initiatives that are related to cybersecurity that are, that's part of that plan that we, we can't wait five years to do this work. We've got to start now, and we've got to get it done as quickly as possible, and our teams are working on it. So, regarding the, the incremental items beyond that, we are planning for those more, more in line with a one- to three-year plan than, say, a five-year plan. That's a better line of sight for us, but the initial phase of our plan has been outlined. We identified over fifty-two initiatives that we needed to work on to improve, not just in cybersecurity space, which is the first priority, but in other areas of, of IT for BSIT. And, but our first focus is on cybersecurity, and that's what we are working on now.
So, when, when can we expect that to be completely finalized and the council briefed on that?
Well, the plan has been finalized. We have reviewed it with the IT Steering Committee and got approval. We've got approval for the funding. We've got approval for the additional roles that we need, that's a part of it. And we just have to set up the time for when to brief the council. Like I said, we tried to do Councilman Costello and Council, Council President together last week, didn't work out. We know we have to brief, and we plan to continue to brief you guys and keep you in the loop on not only the plan, but our progress, our issues and our challenges.
Yes, I mean, I certainly look forward to, you know, hearing from your office on when, you know, each of the council members can sit down and get briefed on that, but you did mention the costs associated with it, so what is that cost?
So, our cost, and I'll just give you rough numbers for the plan, was roughly eight, eight point six million dollars, of which we and BSIT within our own budget could cover seven point seven of that. And then we had a roughly two million dollars, two point six million dollars in additional resources, human capital, that we needed. So, the, the total amount was roughly eleven million dollars, and we offset that by seven point four-ish, and our additional ask was for roughly, I believe, three or two point six million.
Right, and we believe that some of that will be covered by the ten million dollar supplemental appropriation. So, there will be some, the ten million dollar supplemental appropriation is obviously first being directed to the immediate response cost, but we will, we believe there will be some funding left over in that ten million dollar supplemental that will be able to be applied to this quote-unquote three million dollar gap. And then the, the administration is committed to making up the difference if we, if there is a difference going forward. This is an eighteen-month plan, so it will cross fiscal year, so we may be able to absorb some of the rest of it in the next fiscal year as well.
And I, just to, just to add to Cheryl's point, and we are planning, because some of these initiatives will take time, we are planning for that, that bridge into the next fiscal year for those additional funds. We're going through the actual planning piece right now, and that's due on the twenty-second of November.
So, are you, if I heard correctly, so you're still experiencing costs associated with the initial ransom task?
So, the, and you may, you, tell me, correct me if I am wrong, so there are still some unbilled expenses from the initial cyber. So, we, we have had, we've received services but not been paid, we've not been billed for some of those services yet.
Sounds like the hospitals, you know, you go in there, you get a bill six months, a year later, is that what's going on?
Something.
And I, I would just, excuse me, I would just say it's more of a, a timing issue. I think depending upon, we just got a bill the other day, and we had to do the research to make sure that, did we pay it already or is it in transit? So, I think it's, it's our vendors squaring up their books and us squaring up ours and the deltas that are still being billed that are coming through.
So, there's no more current outside help focused on this? Everything else is now being transitioned into resuming normal operations?
Well, I would say, I would call it, I, I, I kind of call it phase two, right? So, phase one was recovery, right? Was getting everything working again, you know, getting everybody's emails up, getting everybody on computers that worked, getting all the applications that were impacted or corrupted, completely rebuilt, and we worked together to really have timelines and prioritize. And I'm really, I mean, I think that I'm really grateful and proud of the people at BCIT who got all of that. I mean, we are ninety-eight percent done on that in six months, which it really outpaces most of the other places that have had an impact like this. So, I, I kind of, I feel like we're in phase two, which is, there are things now that we're doing that have kept some of those vendors on-site to help us to improve our security protocols, help us document things so that that's all properly documented, and we have all of that to advise us on things that we can do to improve and more secure our environment. So, I, I kind of feel like we're in phase two, which is, we're out of the crisis, we've gotten back in rummaging, and now we're doing things that need to be done to help secure our system, our environment, and, and make us better and stronger.
So, would it be accurate to say that the approximate eleven million dollars moving forward to put the fifty-two-point plan in place that you mentioned about preparedness and security? Would it be accurate to say that if that had been done previously, before the attack had taken place, that the attack wouldn't have taken place?
No, I think that's, that's a stretch to be able to say, to say that. You could, you could argue that it may not have had the impact that it had, but to say that, that any investment in IT is going to prevent an attack from occurring, whether it's an internal or external, is probably a stretch.
So, this money is stuff that should have been done anyways, or is this being done specifically because of the experience that we went through?
It does cover some of the requests that we had presented to the city council both in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, if that's asking, if what, that's what you're asking. The monies are now allocated for several of the things that we talked about in those hearings.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Gail. I just wish that the administration at the time took that seriously when we requested that, that information and that information be taken seriously and that the investment be made. A couple of quick questions for you guys, just going back through some things. I know some of the things that we already talked about. We talked about the all hazards plan. Once we have it updated, we're going to test it to make sure that it works, correct?
So, it's, again, it's a general framework for how agencies interact with each other. So, basically, before nine eleven in Katrina, which you had between levels of government, local, state, federal, and then between different agencies, was a lack of understanding of how we would interact during emergencies, who's the lead, who's following, who's expected to provide what services to move towards resolution of the incident. But again, it's an all hazards approach, which is in line with the National Incident Management System. So, again, testing it, yeah, there's ways we could go around and talk about how we would provide those services, but really, if we're doing drills or tabletop exercises, we're more talking about testing policies and procedures at the agency level. Does that make sense? And I think, this is, I guess, my time to pitch, we will be hosting ICS 402, it's a basic four-hour class, one day, for elected officials, appointed officials, and folks who might not be comfortable or familiar with emergency management. We're hosting the first round, there'll be three, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday before Thanksgiving in the Kern Room, and encourage as many as you all or your staff to attend. I think we want to get out, again, a greater awareness of how it is that the city does manage incidents and how that is in line with the national best practices. So, I, I feel like I'm talking-
I guess, I guess my, my, my question to you, Director, would be, for example, we just had active shooter scenarios done here, will, will you guys do something similar with the all hazards?
Yes, so, one of OEM's primary charges is to, again, train and exercise on various incidents, just, and it will fit within the EOP, and it'll also be looking at testing agency-level procedures.
Thank you. And just, we talked about the incident command center, were there incident action plans that were generated for each operational period, like in the first seventy-two hours or afterwards?
I'm not sure what written plans or documentation that BSIT had within the, the incident command. I think one thing that was very unique about this incident was, again, we lost a lot of IT capabilities in the early going, so a lot of the things that I would normally do, like situation reports emailed out to stakeholders on the watch lists, I was unable to do on my end. And our preferred method in OEM to get out situational awareness and do multi-agency coordination, R-CIT reps to that group, and then to folks that are in the EOC. In terms of what was happening on the ground, I have in front of me, and I'll give you all a copy, is a basic definition of terms from FEMA's website, but for incident action plan, it's an oral or written plan containing the objectives established by the incident commander or the unified command, addressing tactics and support activities for planned operational periods, generally twelve to twenty-four hours. I think one thing that was unique about the pace of this kind of incident was, we were meeting on hourly or bi-hourly basis to communicate internally, we're talking about in the incident command here, about what was happening and what we were doing. And then I think that got us as far as it could get us in terms of diagnosing, and then there was a moment where we reduced or changed that battle rhythm down to operational periods of basically six to eight hours, because it was just wearing on the staff. And the staff from BSIT really worked very long, hard hours with the federal partners, the state partners with private sector. So, I guess my thought is, there's probably lots of documentation that we can't provide because of related to the investigation about what goals and objectives were in the early hours of this. I think once we got to a slower battle rhythm, that was more manageable, then a lot of the operations were focused on my end, on the continuity of operations activation with remote coordination at the EOC. So, I think that's a little complicated, but I think I'd try to answer what you're saying.
Yeah, I guess my, my worry and my concern about that is if, if they, we don't have action plans or anything that we can go back to, and yes, you're right, we didn't have email, but Google Docs was still working, we could have had working documents that people could have shared with the email accounts that they were using to-
I would leave the existence of what was documented not up to Director Carter, and then I'm not sure if we can speak on it.
Yes, sir.
My, my point is that the National Incident Management System is set up to be flexible, so that the plans for this can be oral, written, it can be ICS forms, it can be in forms that are more accessible to, basically, folks that are not emergency management. The point is that there's regular communication of incident goals and objectives from the incident commander, and those are made clear to personnel.
But you don't know what he did specifically.
They were there.
Sarah?
We, we use the hosting site box from our, our operations lead clock hill. So, for individuals that had PCs, you know, our notes were taken and stored there, our reports, once we started getting reports, were, were stored there. So, our documentation needs were addressed by using an external hosting source.
And that's really the same approach we took with Web EOC, which is hosted by MEMA at the state level outside of our infrastructure, so we knew that it wouldn't be affected by the ransomware.
Thank you. Do we, this is a different kind of question, do we have an inventory of a city IT equipment that has outlived its service updates? For example, that Microsoft no longer supports, won't support due to the age, and do we know where these out-of-compliance items are located? And if so, if they haven't been replaced, why haven't they? And do we have a plan to replace them?
So, the short answer is, is yes. The extended answer is, there still may be some things out there that we may not know about. And I could get into the details, but if I got into the details, I think we would start to expose potential vulnerabilities.
The yes is, the yes is a good enough answer for this form. Thank you.
Cheryl, before you talked a little bit about the documentation of, of what was happening at the beginning of the event and all the workarounds, is there some type of plan to aggregate that, to like bring in a consultant? Because that, that's what would seem to make sense here.
Yeah, so, we have been in conversations about bringing on an outside expert to work with us on taking, there was extensive gathering of information and documentation that was done by City Stat, OEM, and BCIT to identify all of the impacted applications and develop, prioritize, you know, mostly customer facing, facing financial applications, and develop meaningful workarounds that enable the city to be able to continue to conduct business. And that is all documented and, and extensively documented, but it's a massive documentation. And as you know, everybody is so busy doing their day-to-day work and working on this that it's hard to figure out internally who would have the capacity to take that information, put that into an after-action, and also incorporate that into COOP plans and a continuity of operations plans. And so, we are in discussions about bringing some outside group in to work with us on, on accomplishing that in, in partnership with all three organizations.
It would seem to make sense to have the same consultant doing all of that work, or the same team of consultants.
So, I, I think the approach to that can be variable. I know that for the civil unrest, the approach we had was that PERF came in and did an analysis of policing tactics around the civil unrest, while we brought in Johns Hopkins to do the overall incident after-action plan about what else, the overall city response, fire, police, OEM, the general response. We're going to have those conversations internally, I think, about how to best achieve that, and, you know, we look forward to doing that. I think the biggest challenge has been, it's just been a very busy six months in terms of the level of activity, emergency-wise, incident-wise around the city.
Right, I would also just add, and, and you and I have spoken about this, and this will be no surprise to anybody else, is I would imagine that something that people would want to see in an after-action report are answers to the question that Councilman Schleifer is asking, which is, when did you know what happened and where did it happen and how did it happen? And we've specifically been asked not to do that type of analysis and put it out in the public, and so, we're sort of, we have to wait on that regard. And so, I think for us, that's why I think we have had a continuous conversation about what the best way to do this is, but I, I think, sort of regardless of that particular piece of it, it, we, we are very interested in bringing in an outside consultant to work with us on taking all of that information we have and putting, and documenting that sooner as opposed to later. So, I think that's our present intention.
I've had conversations also with peers in other jurisdictions, particularly Atlanta, about after actions and what was done and not done, and I don't want to talk about those conversations, but I think it's, this is a different kind of incident than writing an after-action for a hurricane or a blizzard where the event duration is very well-known, and the outcomes of the after-action are not related to any active criminal investigation or not.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily-
So, I think we are trying to figure out how to best approach that. I think nationwide, this is a challenge.
I'm, I'm not as concerned about the specific components, more so that it's done while it's still fresh in everyone's mind and it's organized in a logical manner.
So, one thing that's good-
That it's a useful document should this happen again, we, we have a playbook.
So, one thing that- So one thing that's good is that on Web EOC, there's a specific, a specific board for after-action, basically venting or feedback throughout the incident, and we have that log. And one of the things that I know, just reviewing it quickly, is that we know communication could be improved. So there's a lot of documentation through Web EOC about what was happening with COOP. City Stat was documenting their workarounds. We have documented emails and other boards about areas for improvement, areas of strength, what was happening. I think all of that eventually can be synthesized into some sort of report, but that will have to be kept separate, most likely, from anything that's forensic. I think that's the likely approach in my mind.
That's fine. I, Todd, I want to jump to the disaster recovery plan, or, or lack thereof. This was something that your predecessor didn't do in his first 18 months, and I know it's something we've talked about. What is the status of, of your efforts to create a disaster, an IT disaster recovery plan?
We went into negotiations with Deloitte. We have a wet signatures on a contract. We are trying to get that contract into the BOE process. We didn't get it this week, there's still a few MBO, challenges, not challenges, but just, just issues we have to work through. For example, we have minority participation in this work with Deloitte, and we just had to work through MBO office to get the waiver, because they didn't set specific goals. So once we got past that, which is, we're talking daily, it'll go to the BOE for approval. It is a select source, and we think we can have a, assuming we get that completed this, the next week or so, we think the first quarter of 2000, yearly calendar, 2020, we, toward the end, we should have discussions and be able to have a DR plan that we can share with you and other council members.
And my understanding is, best practices suggest that components of the disaster recovery plan should be tested every six months. Is that something that Deloitte is going to be providing support with doing, or is that something that at least has come up in the conversations with Deloitte?
We've talked about it with Deloitte, we haven't gotten to the point as to how we would execute on that, but that's something we would figure out. That's a, you know, that's a, can be a fairly large exercise, it can be a tabletop exercise. We just haven't gone through the specifics to figure those details out.
But it's...
But it's something we have talked to them about.
It's safe to say that, that's, testing of the DRP is something that you are going to prioritize?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a perfect answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a, just a follow-up to a question that Councilman Schleifer asked earlier, just wanted to make sure we have the clarifies and answer. Did we, did you guys follow the Cyber Security Incident Response and Response Plan? Was that followed by the previous director?
The Cyber Incident Response Plan that was generated by the InfoSec was followed, yes, sir.
Thank you. And, and this question for you is, Madam Deputy Chief, right now, this gentleman is the acting head of the agency. Is there a plan to have a permanent lead of BCIT, especially with the incidents that's going on? I think it's a, it's a critical need for us to have permanent leadership and to also make sure that they have the resources that they need.
I will raise that question with the mayor, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I am done for now, Mr. Chair.
Can we talk about cybersecurity training for city employees? I've been here for five years, and I've never received cybersecurity training. I've been an IT professional for about 13 and a half years now, and have, have received that training on a very rigid and consistent basis in my other employment. And I'm just wondering why, what's the, what's the plan? Because right now, we don't have it.
It's, it's coming. That's part of, we, we've received a number of quotes that include cybersecurity training, and that's what we are actively working to select. I, I think we're at a point where first quarter of 2020, calendar year, we will have very specific actions on cyber, cybersecurity training. There are a lot of communications that go out in October as a result of Cyber Security Month. You may have seen some of those, but, but we, we have a number of initiatives that we are contracting with vendors to help us do. Cybersecurity training is one of them.
Do you see that as something that would be mandatory for city employees?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
So Councilman, I'm kind of chuckling, because we talked about this at our last Cyber Stat meeting, and one of the things that we actually talked about, and it's sort of like the timeline about this, is having the administrative manual amended, so that it was a requirement for city employees to have this training. So I, we are, in order to make it a requirement, we will actually have to go and, and get the administrative manual amended, so, but it's on the list of things to do.
I think that's a great idea, and I haven't talked to the president or my co-chair about it, but I'm almost certain that that's going to be one of the recommendations in our report. So that's great news. Do we have a, do we have policies and procedures in place for patching and updates for servers and workstations and laptops?
Short answer is yes. Here's the detailed answer. We have about 28 or so cybersecurity policies that we are actively reviewing and revising. That is what we brought Cripsis on to do. Cripsis was brought on to the BOE several, several weeks ago. The first policy that we reviewed and revised was a patching policy, and that was a policy that we took up to our IT Steering Committee. That policy is, is created, it goes through our InfoSec organization, it goes to our infrastructure organization, it goes to the IT leadership, then it goes to that IT agency group that I talked about on a number of occasions, all for input, and then finally to law. And then once all of that input and, and, you know, revisions occur with that policy, it goes up to the Steering Committee for final approval. As a result of that policy, one of the things that that group, who meets every two weeks, we have what we call Patch Tuesday. And we coordinate with that group the patches for not just the B sit-owned servers, you know, routers, et cetera, but, but, but all the equipment throughout all of Baltimore City, excluding the quasi-agencies. And it is there that we work through the exclusions, it is there that we manage the patches, it is there that we go through the lessons learned in terms of what worked and what didn't work. And we have been doing that for over, I think, about two months, for about two months, we've been working with, with that group to do that. So we have a policy, we have procedures, we are actively patching, we've made marketed improvement in patching our infrastructure.
So, Gail?
And I just want to say, in 2017 is when I came to the city council wanting money for a patch management system, but due to the partnership between OEM and B sit, we were actually able to get a grant, which helped us implement it for the workstations. And so it's been in place for two and a half years. But that was a, a partnership between OEM and B sit, going to the feds for a grant.
Most people call it Taco Tuesday, but I'm glad that you have Patch Tuesday. Can we get a, a list of the title, the purpose statement, the last date reviewed, and who approved for each of those 28 cybersecurity, plus or minus 28 cybersecurity-related policies?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And I, I may come back to ask for specific policies, understanding that those would be FOU.
Yes, and so we would have to, we would also have to give you our schedule, because all of these policies have not been completed and gone through that process yet. So we'd be glad to share all of that, that with you.
So we would do, so let's get...
I would even offer, I don't know if I can, we have a meeting Friday where we're meeting with the IT agency group. We could, if you can come to that meeting, we'll, we have a number of policies we're going to discuss as part of that process.
What, what time is that on Friday?
Noon.
Okay. So yeah, let's get, and I'll, I'll circle back with you on that, and I appreciate the invite. Title, purpose, last date approved, who approved it?
Okay.
And what its status is, for example?
Okay.
We plan to review this in two months, or this is under review.
Okay.
In addition to that, can we get that workflow that you described for the review of the policies and procedures? Can you get that?
Actually, I have a copy of that.
Yeah, can you, can you include that and send it?
Because it's what we took to the, yes, we can do that.
And for each of those groups, I know you mentioned there was a IT Steering Committee, and you also mentioned the IT heads at each of the agencies.
Correct.
Pardon me. Can you get us a list of the membership of each of those groups?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you.
Are, are updates being pushed out onto computers, or are we expecting each person at their workstation to go in and hit update?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your, your question.
Are, are updates being pushed out citywide across all city-owned computers? Are they automatically being pushed out by you guys?
Yes, yes.
Usually emails, I think email blast about when...
Yes, that's the patch management workstation system I was referring to.
So you're doing that automatically, so like...
Automatically.
Like if somebody doesn't know what's happening, they'll lose whatever wasn't saved on their computer, or?
No, we send out in advance notification of when we're doing it.
Okay.
And then when you come in, if you turn off your PC when you leave at night, and when it comes back on, it makes you log back on as both the username and the, and the password. If you don't shut your PC off at night, it still makes you log. So they do get an indication that way, because it matches up with the email blast that goes out the night before.
Gotcha. So all of our computers across the board are up to date based on the manufacturer's updates?
As long as they're plugged in.
And laptops?
I can't speak, I can't speak to the ones that don't get plugged in or, or don't bring that laptop into the city, but yes.
Gotcha. Okay, and as far as our just general...
There might be some exclusions associated with the legacy applications that might be associated with it.
And as far as just general basic protocol, is a city employee able to, you know, they go to a trade show and they find one of those thumb drives, are they allowed to plug that into their city computer?
At the time, unfortunately, yes.
Oh, like today?
I'm sorry?
Today?
Yes.
So I can go and plug a thumb drive into my computer?
Yes.
Is that policy going to stay that way?
No, that's part of, you know, we, what we don't want to do is just randomly put controls without, one, proper approval, but also the proper communication and change management to let people know. For instance, if you do plug, as a, as an example, if you do plug a, a thumb drive in, you know, we're going to wipe it clean, put security on it, encrypt the contents of it, and then that's the only way we can use it. Or if we say, you know what, you can't use these anymore, this is the, you know, the, the common carrier for viruses and malware. We want to have that policy discussion, and we want to vet it through that organization and get it approved by our, our Steering Committee before we make those types of changes.
Doctor, thank you.
What's that?
I said, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, this is really for you, just as we, we're going to be communicating, like follow-ups, so that we can prepare for the future hearings, just to make a timeline for the, how we expect them to get the information over to us.
Yeah, for the, for the previous request I had, does a week sound reasonable?
The only thing I'd ask is for a little bit extra time, we are seeking legal review of documents before we turn them over to you all because of the criminal investigations. So I think if we could have, you know, an ex, I mean, we had to ask you for a couple extra days this time because of that, so...
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
If you could give us like 10 days to two weeks, I think that would just be...
Deputy Chief, what if we, if, what if we just, we convene and just, after this hearing, convene and compile that and send it all to you at once? Would that, would it help with that process?
That'd be terrific, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. And keep it in mind, at this point, we're not asking for any documents, we're just asking for a summary of, of what exists. But yeah, that's, we'll work together. Let's say the 6th, 7th, 8th, so why don't we say by November 22nd, two Fridays from now?
Yes.
Would that be reasonable? Okay. And then we'll draft up, I'll draft up an email and send it over. David, has OEM ever provided Incident Command training for agency heads and deputies at the agencies listed in the emergency ops?
So we have trained EOC reps and agency heads in the past, and that's something we want to continue to do. We are actively currently working with BPD and other agencies on ICS training, which is very positive. So I brought in my Training Exercise Section Chief, Chris Hiles, has been very present in the agencies with Health Department, with BPD, to do ICS training. So we want to keep doing that. I think the big push for me is to get you all to attend ICS 402 for elected and appointed officials, to where you get a general broad understanding of how the system works, and then people understand how they fit in the puzzle. In an ideal world, we already do have emergency specialists in a number of agencies, but mostly fire, police, we've had past specialists in Health Department and DPW, that I'd love to have fully trained on all ICS 100, 200, 300, 400, 700, 800, Basic Academy, Advanced Academy. I like to have that all with certain reps in all the agencies, so there's folks that are go-to for certain emergency management-type issues. But I think that's something we'll continue to work on, to identify those individuals, but...
Can you, so this was our first time hearing about that opportunity, and I'm sure there's several members of the council that would like to take advantage of that, including our staff.
Yes.
Can you get that over to us tonight?
Yes.
With just the details?
Yeah, we're, we're sending the email out tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Thank you all very much. We are going to go into recess, and we will, Cheryl will connect, and I'll, I'll get you the list of everything we discussed, and then we will go from there. And we expect to announce another committee hearing sometime in the near future, I can't tell you when that is, but hopefully get another one on the books before the end of the calendar year. So thank you all.
Thank you.